We will begin the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board meeting for November 10th, 2022. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. The upcoming meeting dates are December 20th, 2022, and January 17th, 2022. We do not have minutes from the last meeting, so we'll put that off until next meeting for approval. Let's start with a roll call, starting with Don.
I'm Pappy, President.
Craig Arco, President.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
And thank you very much. Got it. So the first item on the agenda is I Park Building A. Welcome.
Thank you. Troy Wojcikowski with Stantec Engineers for I Park. Joe Carter is also with us tonight, representing I Park. I think we had just a few loose ends after our last meeting last month, which I can just kind of summarize for you. It was covered in our resubmission. I think there was outstanding issues from Brendan, the traffic consultant, with some of the traffic counts and the analysis, which have since been clarified and cleared up with a resubmission by the traffic consultant for the project. So I think Brendan can speak to this, but I think that satisfied his outstanding comments as far as the traffic study goes. Also related to the traffic, we added some additional directional signs that we discussed last month at the meeting for trucks to all go left as they exit to head towards Lime Kill Road and Lot 52. Other kind of loose ends was the water supply that we discussed last month, that we will be connecting to a town water district a couple hundred feet north of the site on West Drive. There was a question regarding fire storage and whether there would be a fire, a water storage tank on the site or on the I Park property for that matter. And at this point, the fire storage will be provided within the existing system through agreements with Ashley Furniture and the water provider. So there's no need for onsite water storage tank that would affect the site plan.
Can I just stop you right there?
Sure.
Based on what? Because that's not my understanding.
That was...
The town of Poughkeepsie.
Well, he said the town. I assume he meant the town of...
No, not the town of East Fishkill.
Meant to say the town of Poughkeepsie.
Correct.
For clarity.
Okay, correct.
He's right.
Yep. And we did add a chain link fence along West Drive with a screening fabric to screen the park trucks and the containers that we discussed at last month's meeting and adjusted some of the landscaping along West Drive to fit that fence. I think that's it. I think there was pretty minor changes that we discussed and are reflected in our resubmission. So if there's any comments left from the consultants or the planning board, we're here to answer them.
Excellent. Many questions from the board members? How about the professionals?
I'll just clarify what Troy indicated about the traffic. I think, you know, one of the issues we had last time is there, there was just more, more cars leaving in that, in the peak hours than there were arriving. We did get that, that distribution sort of to coincide with each other. They, they are using sort of tenant provided data for the traffic. It is, the traffic that they're showing for their generation is, you know, greater than like an IT use for a warehouse type of facility. So it's higher than what we would have picked out of the manual. So from that perspective, we're going to, you know, make an assumption that, that it's relatively accurate, but I think one of the conditions when we get to the conditions of approval would be that we, we do take a look at the traffic after the, after it's fully operational to make sure that we, that we have the right numbers and understanding of that, because there still is a disparity between the traffic and what they're showing that's going to be arriving in these different shifts. They show 60, 60 employees arriving at three different shifts throughout the day. So even if we had two shifts arriving at once, you know, you'd look at 100 and 120 plus parking spaces for maybe the people that are staying at the building during the day, even if you said 150, they are providing 258 parking spaces. So, you know, the parking that's being provided is, is quite a bit more than what the anticipated amount of traffic that's going to show up and be working there. At least that's, that's from, from the traffic study perspective. So, and I know we've asked a question and I think you guys have stated that they, they need or want the parking. I'm not sure, you know.
Is there a way, I mean, are, are you committed to that parking or can you not have as much parking on the site? Because I know that currently, right now, you've got some sort of agreement to have 12 spaces on Lot 7. And if you don't need that, then, you know, potentially the planning board could consider waiving that, that parking need.
Is it 12 or even more than that? It's like 35.
But is it the parking spaces generated by a square foot of the building?
It is, it is, but what they're saying is that they provided evidence to, to Brendan that they don't need that many parking spaces.
Can we waive a portion of the spaces?
We can if we decide we want to and if that's what they want. But last time we asked the question and they weren't 100% certain how they wanted to handle that.
If I might ask though, what happens if there's some type of change of use here on the building at some point in time down the road and there's like an increase in the need for capacity inside that building? Wouldn't that, would they have to come back to us then? You know what I'm saying? Like let's say that the...
If the use is of a higher intensity, then yes, but if it's another similar square, you know, similar sort of warehouse use that requires a similar number of parking spaces, they wouldn't have to come back.
And I'm just saying, just let's say it turns into like that somebody approaches the building, you know, comes back up for, you know, reuse and it's a manufacturing company and they need a tremendous amount more parking spaces and more employees or, you know, because it is a fairly substantial sized building. So I don't know.
Brett, you're 100% right. So the... Answers are they wouldn't have the same number of trucks then at that point.
Right.
If it changed like that.
Understood.
I, I think that's sort of at the heart of it. They are purchasing this piece with the subdivision. So I think they're, and trust me, we're more than grateful and appreciative, Brendan, of you pointing out that we have excessive parking, which is never usually the case, but we, we think you're spot on. But in the case, I think they are, since they're acquiring it, they want to make sure they have parking if uses change or they're well changed. So we've had, we had a discussion after our last meeting and they just said they want that for the worst case scenario. So, you know, but, but we are grateful that, you know, that you've considered, you know, the actual parking.
Is this just for trucks or are we talking about?
This is car parking.
Vehicle?
Yeah, vehicle.
So what's the problem with having too many spaces?
Well, they're subdividing a portion of the property, right? And, and they, in addition to that, they have, they have an easement on the adjacent lot for additional spaces. And, you know, it would be cleaner if they didn't have to have an agreement, but we're just asking the question because it seems odd that they're just asking for those additional spaces on the other property. And there is some concerns about whether or not the site as a whole has enough parking or will have enough parking for all the uses that are coming.
Oh, for the additional, I see.
So Michelle, to, to that point, we will push back with them, but that's how it's occurred exactly. They, they've asked for a little bit more. We obviously prefer not to give them an easement for more because we think they're covered, but if we can negotiate it back, we'll come back to the board. But at the moment, you know, they've, but, but thanks for everyone focusing on it because it is...
Well, or with an eye towards some type of concession if they're not going to use it, that there's something written into the easement.
Yeah, we maybe, if, let's just say we do, we're not quite at full capacity, but let's say we're able to, or we need, the site starts to look like we're getting squeezed with parking, we would at that point go back to Ashley if they really haven't used it and try to get a letter from them that would extinguish the easement or whatever.
Could cede it, yeah.
But, you know.
Or have maybe a timeline on the easement? Is that possible? Like a, you know, if it's not being used, that it has a, like a run out period?
That's possible, but I think it's also part of whatever deal they're negotiating.
Probably part of the deal.
Right. It's part of whatever deal they're negotiating. So I think it'd be tough for the planning board to step in and, and add some sort of condition.
Understood.
But I think what we would do if that's, we would, we'll try to encourage Ashley over time if they really don't need it to free up those spaces.
Uh huh. Excuse me, just out of curiosity, that the labor pool that they've been telling us, is that the average labor pool where maybe the extra parking is for overflow for peak?
You know, being honest, I don't think they'll ever need the parking.
I think the, the parking, the allocation, whoever said it was correct in that, they, they determine the parking based on, on the zoning code.
Square footage.
So, you know, in terms of a thousand, one parking space over 1,000 square feet and a little additional for the office space that's being allocated. So it, the, the parking is consistent with the town code. It's just, it doesn't necessarily jive with the traffic and their...
They just want it because that was the code. They don't want to, you know.
And they don't want to be pigeonholed.
They don't want to be pigeonholed. They don't want to feel that if they, you know, so anyway.
I mean, it makes sense to me on their end. I mean, I'm not sitting here negotiating for them, but I do understand both sides of our side, you know, with regards to the concession of the parking, but still, if that's what the, you know, actual building code is, then so be it.
Other questions or comments?
Our remaining comments are really administrative, just how they're getting water, disposition of the DEC permit and if there's going to be any changes to the site plan as a result of that. I don't know that there are. Sign off from OPRHP and that's pretty much it. All of the site plan related comments have been handled.
Any other questions or comments? If, if not, and if there's no objection, I will enter a negative declaration into the record. This negative declaration dated November 10th, 2022. Town of East Fishkill Planning Board has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. I'm going to summarize this and anybody who wants to see actually the full version can see it in the planning department at any time, but I'll try to, to truncate this a little bit to make it easy for this evening's meeting. Description of the action. The proposed action is the construction of a 253,000 square foot furniture distribution warehouse with 15,000 square feet of office space and a 4,800 square foot canopy for customer pickup and loading on newly created 13.23 acre lot on I Park campus. The newly created Lot 10 will be subdivided from the existing 85.01 acre Lot 7. In addition to the warehouse building, the newly created Lot 10 will contain 223 car parking spaces, 65 loading spaces, 76 truck spaces, and 11 container spaces. As part of the proposed site plan, a satellite parking area with 106 spaces separate from, separate, excuse me, from the warehouse, a parking area will be provided to serve Building 700. Additional handicap spaces to serve Building 700 will be constructed immediately adjacent to the building. This is a type one action. And going through the reasons for supporting this determination, land use zoning and public policy, the proposed action would result in subdivision of a 13.23 acre portion of the 85.01 acre Lot 7 for construction of this 253,800 square foot furniture warehouse. Study which shows the former IBM campus is remaining industrial commercial, proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to land use, zoning, or public policy. Visual character, the proposed project would result in the construction of a new warehouse with associated parking. Proposed new building would appear industrial in character and would be consistent with the character of the existing I Park campus. The proposed new structure would only be visible from the interior I Park campus roadways and would not be visible from I Park Boulevard, Route 84, or any surrounding residential, commercial, or industrial properties not part of the I Park campus. Therefore, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant changes to visual character and no significant adverse visual impacts are expected. Historic and archaeol, excuse me, archaeological resources. The proposed project would be constructed within a location that has been previously disturbed and is not expected to impact historic or archaeological resources. Therefore, no significant adverse impacts to historic or archaeological resources would be expected. Wetlands, plants, and animals. The proposed action would be constructed entirely within an existing paved parking area on the I Park campus. No, no tree removal or disturbance to undeveloped areas would occur as a result of the proposed project. While the existing parking area where Building A is proposed is partially located in a New York State DEC 100-foot adjacent area, the site was formerly part of the IBM industrial campus and has been disturbed and covered with impervious surfaces since before 1970. Therefore, the proposed action, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to wetlands, plants, or other animals. Transportation. Based on the proposed site generated traffic, the applicant consents and agrees to inclusion in the Route 52 Traffic Improvement Area Assessment in coordination with the town and New York State DOT. Therefore, the proposed action would not have any significant adverse impacts to transportation. And other, there are no other significant potential impacts. So I offer this into the record and would ask for a second. May I have a second?
So moved.
And, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. So as a result, we have a resolution. Resolution, name of the site plan, I Park amended site plan, building area A, parenz, Ashley Furniture, close parenz. I Park, East Fishkill LLC, 200 North Drive. Whereas the applicant submitted applications for approval of the subdivision and site plan to the East Fishkill Planning Board for the construction of a 253,800 square foot furniture distribution warehouse with 15,000 square feet of office space, a 4,800 square foot canopy for customer pickup and loading, 223 car parking spaces, 65 loading spaces, 76 truck spaces, and 11 container spaces on property located at 200 North Drive, consisting of 13.23 acres in the High One zoning district, which property includes portions of Lot 7 as shown on the final subdivision plat, Global Foundries US 2 LLC, filed in the Duchess County Clerk's Office on August 3rd, 2017, as FM number 12578 and designated as tax parcel PO 6355-00-958962 as part of the former IBM East Campus on Route 52. And whereas, the project is type one action pursuant to six New York CRR 617.4B65 and on September 13th, 2022, notice of intent to declare lead agency pursuant to seeker was circulated to all known, involved, and interested agencies. And whereas, on October 11th, 2022, the planning board opened a duly noticed public hearing on the subdivision site plan applications, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas, on October 11th, 2022, the planning board closed the public hearing on the subdivision and site plan applications. And whereas, the planning board referred the application to the ARB and received, received approval from the ARB on July 7th, 2022. Whereas, on November 10th, 2022, the town board, as lead agency pursuant to the seeker, adopted a negative declaration of environmental significance, finding the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And whereas, the applicant consents and agrees to inclusion in the Route 52 Traffic Improvement Area Assessment and the proposed fire district assessment. And whereas, the planning board has considered the application with respect to all relevant provisions of the town code, including Chapter 163 and Chapter 194, Article 7 of the town code. And now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants subdivision plat approval as shown on the plan entitled Preliminary Plat Subdivision of Lot 7, a filed map number 12578, prepared by Lobella PC, dated April 28th, 2022, and subject to satisfaction with conditions set forth below. And the planning board hereby grants final site, site plan approval as shown on plans entitled I Park amended site plan, building area A, East Fishkill, New York, prepared by Stantec, dated July 30th, 2021, and last revised October 28th, 2022, which plan set consists of 19 pages, subject to the following conditions. A, prior to the signing of the final subdivision plat by the planning board chairman, the final condition shall be satisfied. Number one, approval of Duchess County Health Department. B, prior to the signing of the final site plan by the planning board chairman, the following condition shall be satisfied. Number one, the applicant shall address the comments in CPL letter dated November 10th, 2022. Number two, potable water will be provided by the Route 52 West Campus Water District. Number three, onsite fire protection storage, if required, will be at a location approved by the town engineer. Number four, approval of water and sewer connection from Duchess County Health Department. Number five, the applicant shall execute a stormwater management facility maintenance easement and agreement for the private stormwater controls on the project site acceptable to the town engineer and town attorney. The easement shall be recorded by the applicant at its sole expense in the office of the Duchess County Clerk. Number six, applicant shall provide traffic counts to the town once the site is operational to support the analysis provided as a part of the seeker documents. Be it further resolved, and are there any other conditions before I move on? If not, be it further resolved, this conditional approval of the final subdivision plat shall expire 180 days from the date of the adoption of this resolution, unless all conditions set forth above have been certified as completed and the final plat has been submitted for endorsement by the planning board chairman, or unless a written request for an extension of the final subdivision plat approval is granted by the planning board. Planning board may grant 90-day extensions to said time period.
I just, I'm sorry, just a question back on the wherethis. Did, did it say that the town board adopted the night deck or that the planning board adopted the night deck? Should be the planning board. I might have just misheard.
Pursuant to secret.
Oh, it should be, no, you did. Planning board.
Excellent catch. It should be, so the, the whereas that we wrote, read that on November 10th, 2022, it is the planning board's lead agency pursuant to seeker adopted a negative declaration, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good catch. Be it further resolved that once the final subdivision plat has been endorsed by the planning board chairman, said plat must be filed in the Duchess County Clerk's Office within 62 days. After said filing, two copies of the final subdivision plat shall be submitted to the town. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. This resolution is submitted by John Eichman and I need a second.
So moved.
Okay, thank you Lori. And we will take a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Mioshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Craig Arco.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Passed. Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to just thank the board? And particularly, we want to thank your professionals because we recognize that they really hustle to do a lot of this. And I think, I just want them to know in this economic environment, the timing was very helpful. So your, your team has been very tough but fair. So have a good evening. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Good, good evening. Okay. The next item on the agenda, and I should have announced this earlier, is Hudson Valley Logistics Center. We are going to adjourn that public hearing again, and that will be adjourned to a special meeting to take place on December 5th at, we believe it could be 6 o'clock. At any rate, do, do watch the website and the exact time will be announced. Does that sound right, Jackie? Jackie, thank you. So that's adjourned. The next public hearing that was adjourned previously is Fire Springs Bridges Subdivision. So I'll accept a motion to reopen that public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Hello, how are you guys?
Wonderful.
I think the last time we were here, we discussed providing some plan clarification on some of the grading on the lots and specifically some of the runoff points for the, for Lot number one, located on the back of the hillside, and then the two lots proposed on the front. Provided, a quick updated SWIP analysis that has some hydraulic calculations on it. We received the review, review letter from Clark Patterson Lee. We understand there's some, obviously some additional information that we'll provide to clarify some of the points that he brought up, but the intent is obviously to protect downstream neighbors and downstream drainage points. So in our next submission, we'll update that plan to reflect some greater analysis to show that we don't increase flow to receiving culverts or residences on the downhill side. Other than that, we provided some updated site distance information and, and drafting improvements, but I think the biggest thing was the drainage and I think we have a little bit more to do on that, but we'll have that in our next submission.
So, so drainage stormwater being the big item is something that you'll be coming back to see us on at the next meeting?
Right. The plan is, we were a little rushed for time for putting the submission in, but we started the hydraulic analysis and it was always, when we were going through the, the comment letters, it was talked about drainage, but now we have some key then points from, that Christian gave us that they're looking at. So now that we have some focus on where those points are going to be, we'll have a revision for the next meeting.
Got it. I, I think there was also another question and maybe you can speak to this a little bit about clear cutting, clear cutting. The application kind of indicated one thing, but it wasn't quite clear exactly what, what was planned there.
The intent is, is to keep, it's obviously a very wooded hillside. The intent is to keep vegetation clearing to a minimum. It obviously affects the SWIP and how we generate stormwater runoff. So typically when we do individual lot construction, there's a plot plan that goes along with it that shows the limit of clearing and it's usually a rule of thumb that people try to follow that, but the intent is not to clear cut, not to deforest, to try to keep the natural character of the neighborhood, because I think that's what would be attractive to people that would want to move here into the subdivision is the fact that it is very wooded.
So I think the, the question, that question came about because of the, I think it was the Indiana bat assessment, and I think in there it gives us a pretty small amount of trees that are going to be cleared, and it may be that he's referencing a specific location, but it's, that is not clear. So maybe we either need to fix that report or clarify that report.
Where that came from goes back to, I think when the applicant was building the original house and we cleared a little bit more than one acre, I think the, the analysis that was done by Nowicki and referenced in that report reflected that one lot, there is a substitute that we have to put in that covers that because we have updated our, our Indiana bat analysis to cover the greater disturbance area that we're showing now. So.
Okay, so we can just get that so we have it on the record?
Yep.
Okay. So before I, I invite the public for comments, are there any other questions or comments by board members or, or professionals? Understanding that Brian has indicated he's going to return with regards to some greater detail on stormwater, are there any comments or questions by members of the public? And if so, please come up and sign in.
Good evening. My name is Richard Martin, 198 Devon Farms Road. What I heard was very encouraging. My concern was always about the clear cut and the, the natural habitat that would remain, and particularly with the lot that will be 15 acres, because that's what will buck my property. And I believe at the last meeting, one of the professionals offered the suggestion of a vegetation barrier or, again, don't quote my verbiage, but, and I'm just wondering what that might be, what that might look like, and I don't know that you're prepared to, to offer that tonight, but again, that's the concern I know of the neighborhood and what I heard was, was pretty encouraging, but again, I hear minimum and I don't know what that means. So maybe in the future, we could have a little better definition of that. That's really it. So I, I thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and we'll ask Brian to respond to any of these questions or comments after everybody's finished. Are there any other questions or comments by members of the public before we ask Brian to return? If not, Brian, is that, is that something you can respond to tonight?
Yeah, I think what we'll do, what we've done in the past, I think we did it with Hunter's Ridge, is we were sensitive to the neighbors behind us, is have a no cut, no cut zone that's written onto the filed map and there's some language that speaks to having restriction, a certain amount of feet off the rear property line or surrounding neighborly property lines. I think on the, on the Devon Farms one, I think it was a 25-foot no clear zone. I think with this lot, with this lot being so sensitive and larger in size, we could probably increase that buffer to give more protection. I'll, I'll advise the applicant that we spoke about this, that it is a good idea to be neighborly sensitive. And I don't think he would have a problem with increasing like a no cut area around that, that property line.
Okay. Got it. So that's something we'll see on the... So, that's something we'll see on the plan for next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else from members of the board or professionals? Then we'll adjourn this public hearing until the December meeting? Will you be prepared for that? So, could I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
December 20th?
To December 20th, correct. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Special.
Good evening. So, the next item on the agenda is public hearing for Satis Rivas, and this is for a solar array on a residential lot. And I guess, let me, before you start, could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing's open, and we'll hear from the applicant's representative.
All right, so we are looking to install two ground mounts at 199 Blue Hill Road. Oops, sorry, didn't know that moved. I was going to give you the dimensions, but it's not. Apologies. Oh, total of 1,600 square feet. What?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just, I was just listening.
Well, anyone opposed?
So, so, did you have anything else to present there, or?
I don't know. This is my first public hearing.
Okay, no problem. So, so let me open it up to questions and comments. Board members, I think we've seen a lot of the detail on this at the previous meeting, but are there any questions or comments by board members or professionals?
This matter also appeared before the ZBA, and they requested the minimum variance that they could.
Okay. Thank you.
At the, at the last meeting, there was some discussion of some more vegetation between the neighboring house.
Yes, so I have that too. And obviously, they would be whatever the vegetation in your code is, minimum of three trees. We can do more if you'd like. I'm assuming you guys do evergreens?
Are the three, the three red dots, are those supposed to represent where the trees are going to be located?
Yes. Because that was the only area where there was any visual from the neighbor.
And have you worked with the neighbor to kind of describe what the plan is?
So, we were informed that no one lives there because the neighbor passed.
No, that's, that's the house next to it. The house with the, with the red, there is a, there is somebody living there. The one next to it on the left is where the neighbor passed.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, we were informed it was the one with the red. I mean, we did send the butters out, so.
Okay.
And I have the signs up on both sides.
It might be worth going over there and just knocking on the door, saying, hey, this is going on, you know, there's something we can do there.
Absolutely.
Could make you agree with that.
I can talk to my boss tomorrow, or I can call her after this and ask her if she wants me to just go before work. I don't know who we usually send for those things, so, but absolutely, we can do that.
Exactly. I did the census on that house two years ago, so I know there's people living there.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, we are prepared to offer a negative deck and, and a resolution if there's no objection.
Yeah, and I think what I would just add, since there's the landscaping, we need to add that as a condition.
Yes. Gotcha.
We can do that.
Got it.
Now, are you okay with the three, or did you want more?
Well, it's hard to know exactly, because it depends on the size of the trees, and it depends on, I, I.
I would have to.
Where, where in relation to the trees, the, the solar panels are going back towards the rear of the property, right?
Is it the purple?
That's the front.
Yeah, the purple, the purple rectangles.
No, that's the, that's the front of the property, if the house is left to them.
There is some vegetation there already, and those additional trees should take care of, you know.
I mean, from, from what I've noticed, most, most towns have required us to do eight-foot evergreens. I believe they start at four feet wide, so that would be 12 feet in total for just the We can, I can get actual dimensions and just make it the width of the actual panels as them going diagonal, and do that many trees.
A little bit further apart anyway, so they can grow and.
Well, yeah, of course, but.
You might need to stagger them.
We can do.
To provide.
The actual math, so that it's going from the start of the first panel to the end of the second panel.
Is it possible for us to include this condition as something that will be acceptable to the town planner, Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I'd like to hear from the, the property owner, the neighboring property owner, but yeah, I mean, we could, we could say a minimum of, and then we could say the three trees, eight feet in height, and then I would have to go out, we'd have to hear from them and see if that would be sufficient to block their view.
Okay. So, once I.
And I'd like to also have a, add something that we have to make sure that they survive for a certain period of time, because on one of the previous solar applications, they put in a bunch of trees and they died.
So, so that will be conditions in the, in the final resolution. We'll stop on that before we complete it. Any members of the public here to speak? On behalf of or against the project? Seems not. So consequently, we will offer a negative declaration or resolution. Negative declaration dated November 10th, 2022. The proposed action is the construction of a 30.24 kilowatt ground-mounted solar system on two separate arrays on 7.40-acre residential parcel located at 199 Blue Hill Road, Town of East Fishkill. And the proposed installation of the solar array would be considered within the R1 zoning and would not be expected to result in any significant changes to the land uses or character of the surrounding residential neighborhood. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. The proposed site plan will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels, will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources, will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials, will not result in a significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. The proposed site plan will not result in an unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will not have a substantial aesthetic effect, will not adversely affect any surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts, will not result in adverse growth-inducing impacts, and is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. In conclusion, no significant potential impacts were identified as a result of the proposed action. So, and that pretty much is it. I'll accept a motion to, to approve this negative resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And we have one abstention by Rich. It passes, and moving on to the resolution. Name of the site plan, solar panel installation, Rivas Residence. Name of applicant, Satis Rivas. Location, 199 Blue Hill Road. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant applied for a site plan and special permit approval under Chapter 100 of the East Fishkill Town Code for a Tier 2 solar energy system, whereas the applicant is proposing to construct a 30.24 kilowatt ground-mounted solar system on two separate arrays on 7.40-acre residential parcel, whereas the applicant applied for and received an 8.10-foot north side yard variance and a 30.5-foot south side yard variance from the East Fishkill Zoning Board on 9/27/22 for the solar arrays. And whereas a public hearing for the Tier 2 solar energy system special permit and site plan was opened and closed on November 10th, 2022, whereas the proposed action is an unlisted action under secret, whereas a negative declaration was adopted by the planning board on November 10th, 2022, and, and now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a special permit and site plan approval for a Tier 2 solar energy system for the above project as represented on the map entitled Solar Panel Installation, Rivas Residence Prepared by Empire Solar, dated July 20th, 22, subject to the following conditions. And before I move to the conditions, I just realized that I did not close the public hearing, and so I would accept a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And so that carries. Moving to the, to the conditions, Michelle, could you?
Yeah, so I would say something to the effect of installation of landscaping, a minimum of, of a minimum of three evergreen trees, eight feet in height, four feet wide, and then say to the satisfaction of the planning, the planner, the town planner, I would say.
Okay.
So installation. So, I, I mean, the only thing I might consider is staggering, so there may be up to five trees there. That's, that's, you know, depending on what I see when I go out there. I might want to do it like this.
And then, do you want to add also how long those trees?
Yeah, and then I would say for a period of up to two years after planting.
Okay. So, if that's acceptable to everyone, we'll move on. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board should cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Craig Arco.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Abstained.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
And John Eichman is an aye, and so it carries. So, the only condition that you need to work with, work with Michelle on the conditions we talked about, and everything's all set.
You still want us to go to the neighbor, right?
Yeah, I think you should go to them and find out what, yeah, make sure that they're.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is JG and TL Holdings LLC. So, this is a public hearing, so I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing's open. Please go ahead.
All right, we have a 5.4-acre parcel on Shenandoah Road, has one existing dwelling on it. We have Shenandoah Road, and we're adjacent from Comptons Road, and then we also have Route 84. What we're proposing is to create two new residential single-family lots and demo a portion of the existing structure that's on site. The existing house has a detached garage, which will remain. The site is served by central water. We're proposing individual septic's. The driveways are roughly 225 feet in length, a little bit longer for lot number one, which is toward the north. We provided soil testing for the plan. We've been out with the health department, we've done some preliminary soil testing. Right now, they look like in-ground septic systems from our results. We have a will-serve letter from the water department for extension of individual water services to the two new lots. The existing house is served by central water. There's a 100-foot setback requirement from Route 84, so that's why the two new dwellings are pushed up more north into the lot to have that separation requirement. Other than that, each lot is served via individual driveway, has adequate site distance for all three lots. Other than that, it's a standard two-lot subdivision, three-lot subdivision with an existing house. So, that's it.
Have you made any changes from the last time this was presented? I think maybe you might have adjusted the position of one or more of the houses?
Yeah, lot, lot, the center lot, we twisted the house to look more toward Shenandoah Road.
And wasn't there a shared driveway the last time you appeared, I thought?
These, these were always, these were always individual driveways.
They were, okay.
No other changes other than?
Little bit of plan cleanup to address some of the comments that came back from the town consultants, but other than that, no real graphical changes to speak of, other than the rotation of the house.
Got it.
And there'll be no further subdividing of the, this existing property?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments by board members? By the town professionals, any questions or comments? Then we'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? It would seem not, so I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a negative declaration for JG and TL, TL, excuse me, Holding Subdivision, 416 The proposed action is subdivision of a 5.4-acre parcel with an existing home into three lots. The proposed action would be consistent with the R1 zoning, would not be expected to result in any significant changes to the land uses or character of the surrounding residential neighborhood. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to the environment for the following reasons. Proposed subdivision will not generate a significant number of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels, will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources, will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials, will not result in any significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas, will not result in an unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will not have a substantial aesthetic effect, will not adversely affect any surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts, will not result in adverse growth-inducing impacts, and is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. In conclusion, no significant potential impacts were identified as a result of the proposed action, and so I will accept a motion to approve this negative declaration.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And we have an abstention by Craig, but the ayes have it, so it carries. Moving on to the resolution. Resolution, name of subdivision plan, JG and TL Holding Subdivision. Name of applicant, JG and TL Holdings. Location, 416 Shenandoah Road. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the application applied for a minor three-lot subdivision of 5.4-acre with a, an existing home, whereas a public hearing was opened and closed on 11/10/2022, and whereas a negative declaration was adopted by the planning board on November 10th, 2022, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants subdivision approval for the above project as represented on the map entitled JG and TL Holdings LLC Prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering PC, dated April 25th, 2022, and last revised September 28th, 2022, subject to the following conditions. Number one, approval from Duchess County Board of Health. And are there any other conditions?
Actually, was that the last revision date, September 28th, or was there a submission in October? I think there might have been.
I guess, yes.
There was. October 28th.
Okay, and, and, so.
And then I, I would say add a condition that the demolition of the existing portion of the home, so the, this house meets, the lot meets setbacks. That's why they're doing it, they're demolishing a piece of the existing house so that it can meet setbacks.
Okay, so, so, could you, could you repeat that for us just one more time?
Sure. I would just say that there's, the condition is approval from Duchess County Board of Health, and then the second one would be demolition of the, of a portion of the existing house to meet required setbacks.
Got it.
Did that happen before the subdivision's sign? What's the timing of that? I think it would have to happen before it's filed, otherwise, the filed map would not be in conformance with code. be in conformance with code.
Okay.
So we'd have to file for a demo permit, demo before filing the map.
Right, okay. Be it further resolved, so if there's nothing else, we'll add that condition, as well as the updated date of the plans that we just discussed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board should cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. And may I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Craig Arco.
Abstain.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Don Pepe.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carries.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next item for discussion is Michael Smilkstein. Can I pronounce that correctly?
You did, yes.
Thank you.
Took me a while. So, good evening, distinguished members of the planning board. My name's Brian Flynn. I'm here on behalf of Suncom and Solar, representing Michael Smilkstein at 26 Clove Branch Road in Hope Bowl Junction, seeking site plan review. Before I go any further, my presentation materials tonight are analog, not digital. Just gonna pass these plans out.
You can pass them down if you want.
So, this small residential solar array consists of 20 LG 435 solar panels, one SMA 7.0 inverter, and a minimally invasive 175-foot AC conduit trench to an additional rapid shutdown initiation device mounted on the northeastern corner of the residence. There will, just a side note, there will also be, up to code, a rapid shutdown initiation device at the ground mounted solar array itself. We've designed the solar array in compliance with all of your solar code under chapter 100, and all of the relevant code under chapters 80, 110, 154, and 194. However, we had to seek area variances for violations of the setback with the zoning board of appeals. Unfortunately, this parcel sizes only one acre, so despite the setbacks requirements being 100 feet, we weren't able to meet those. So we went to the zoning board of appeals, they did grant variances for, for those setbacks. We're hoping to get site plan approval instead of public hearing tonight with your guidance. This array will also be naturally screened from view from any abutting parcels, as you can see on the aerial GIS imagery on the title page of the plans in front of you. The accessory structure will not be visible from the road either, and the short EAF that we filled out for this project reaffirms that no natural resources will be endangered or disrupted by this array during or after the installation. Furthermore, we'll be working in compliance with any local and state fire and electrical code for the duration of the project. Any vegetation disrupting, or disrupted landscape will also be restored accordingly to prevent any erosion or potential detriment to microecology. Ultimately, we're seeking your guidance so that we can move forward with this project in full compliance. We're hoping to schedule a public hearing this evening, if possible, especially since the ZVA noted that we weren't fully in compliance with all of their aspects of the code beyond those variances that were required. We just appreciate your time and consideration here, and also your guidance in moving forward with this.
And if you wouldn't mind, could you repeat, what variances did you obtain from, from the zoning board? I was sort of distracted for a moment.
They were two side property line setback variances, as well as a rear property line variance.
Okay.
The minimum requirement for ground mounted solar arrays in your code is 100 feet, and this parcel isn't even really that large across, it's only one acre. This array is just over 400 square feet in size, and that's actually less than 1% of the, the property coverage total, so it's, it's not much of the property in terms of area covered.
But what about the variance, like how many feet?
Oh, the variance itself, I believe the two sideline variances were, I believe 36, or, I'm sorry, I believe they're 52 feet, and then the rear variance, I think, was 36?
Substantial.
It should be noted on the site plan.
It was 37, 51, and...
There we go. I think that's, that's what it's showing. Okay. So, questions and comments by board members?
What is this? I see the array here, next to the shed, but this also looks like it's got something, doesn't show on the, on the other parts of the plan. Is that something new?
Yeah, this, it looks like a patio and like a little...
So it's not something you added, then?
It is. The, the most recent addition to this property was the shed, which I think Michael actually went, went through your board for approval several years ago, and the survey you see that we had modified for our project, actually was originally done to go to planning for that, the construction of that, that garage or larger workshop that's just south of the residence.
Yeah. I'm just not seeing anything on the survey that indicates whatever that thing is, is actually on the site.
And is there anything on there showing proposed screening from the neighboring properties?
We actually didn't have to add any screening, once we went through the zoning board. There's like a large tree line of evergreens along both sides of the property, and on the rear of the property, there's actually pockets of forest that are kind of surrounding the back. So, you know, we, we would have definitely added screening with the zoning board's, you know, advice on that, but they weren't requiring it because it is naturally screened around the property, and also not visible from the road either because of those two structures, and, and also trees in the front. Normally, we would incorporate screening in our plans, but yeah, the, the board wasn't requiring it, so we didn't add any additional screening.
So this board might require that?
That's totally fair, understood.
How about to the, to the rear neighbor? I see it on either side, I agree with you, there, it looks like adequate.
I think that the parcel access data, which should be like the last three pages, shows a little bit better, more widespread GIS imagery there, and, and like I said, it's, it's mostly like just pockets of forest that are screening the rear as well.
Do you know what type of trees those are in the rear?
I do not, no. I wish I could get that in depth with my projects, but I'm managing over 55.
You mentioned forests, this doesn't look like a big forest.
Understood.
It's this one. You know, if there, there are trees that are gonna drop leaves, the neighbor in the back's gonna see.
Right.
The entire solar array.
That makes sense.
Looks pretty dense here on this picture, this is...
Yeah, it just doesn't look like evergreens to the rear. It's not there. This is not there.
Right, right.
It's like a fire pit, maybe, or patio area, I don't know.
It looks like it was under construction.
Right, right.
So have you been, have you been in contact with the adjacent property owners, including the one to the rear?
Yeah, we have. So all the budding parcels were, were notified at the public hearing for the zoning board of appeals, and they had to sign out front and everything, so, yeah, as far as I know, certified mailers were sent out to any property owner within 500 feet.
Okay, but you haven't had any personal contact with the property owner to the rear?
No, I have not.
Okay. So I'm looking at a satellite photo right now, and it's taken in the summer, so it looks full, and it looks like there's a lot of clearing, but one of the photos you gave us was done in the fall, with all the leaves are off the tree.
Right, yeah.
That back looks wide open.
Yeah, I understand how it seems that way.
Yeah. Would you be opposed to maybe clearing some of those trees to put conifers up, to give a little bit of screening for the neighbor in the back?
I could definitely, yeah, run that by the customer and have our design team incorporate that.
Yeah, just with all these solar arrays going in, you want to make sure that you're protecting the neighbors as well, with some, some screening.
Might even be able to put it without taking anything else out.
Yeah, it looks tight. When you look at the GPS, the trees are right up against the shed.
Yeah.
So, and then again, looking at your photo, all those leaves go down, and it's, it's clear to the, the back neighbor.
Right.
So it's gonna sit right here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, even if you did like three or four conifers back there, like spruce or something, that, that could provide that kind of screening all year round.
Other questions or comments by our professionals?
No, only comment I wanted to make is that he's, he's also asking for a special permit approval, I think he only said site plan, so when he, when you actually advertise for the public hearing, you need to advertise for the, the special permit and the site plan for the, for the chapter 100. Just want to make sure, it's the right notice out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, our office had just very minor comments, you know, provide a copy of the resolution from the ZVA for planning board records, proper erosion control should be used, and just maybe consider, you know, changing the route of the electrical conduit so it doesn't run over top of the well service line that's shown on the, on the survey.
Okay. Our trenches aren't too deep, and we do bring locators to site, and also we bring locators when we do the site eval, but yeah, we could, we could change the trench path if necessary, but we're usually pretty careful around that stuff, and we notify dig safe in advance and everything, so they come out and take a look, too.
Yeah, the service line should be down about four or five feet, I'm gonna assume your conduit is shallow, I would just, just recommend just trying not to cross them at all, if, if you, if you can do it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I'm more comfortable with not crossing any lines.
Any, any other questions or comments? If not, I think we just need to schedule a public hearing, and you'll be ready for that for our meeting of December 20th?
Okay.
Is that right? So, could I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for this project for the December 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. We'll see you then.
Thank you very much, and so I'll just update the plans by then, and that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great.
Actually, the plans have to be submitted by, technically by the end of the month.
And it's another, it's another round of mailings to the neighbors for the public...
Right.
Yeah, so you speak with Jackie, she'll give you all the instructions on the public notice.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is Estates of Phillips Farm. So this was a previously adjourned public hearing to an indeterminate date, and so I guess we will listen to the presentation and consider scheduling reopening the public hearing.
Right.
At a future date.
I think at the, at the last meeting, you know, the biggest thing was, yeah, I think the biggest thing at the last meeting was, we were discussing the availability of central water to the site, and with trying to gather information on how the district was formed, and how it related to this property, we, we took a step back and did some research, and went through the verbiage in the district, and the formation, and how it incorporated vacant parcels. So with this parcel, there were six service connections associated with this parcel, not to be confused with the three that are currently under construction just north of this parcel. So what we, what we're here tonight to discuss with the board is, obviously, in an overall seeker standpoint, look at the, the 11 lot subdivision, but look at it more from a phasing standpoint, where we would allow, be allowed to construct those, those six homes, with the understanding that at such time that the district does have capacity, you know, we could move to the second phase, which is the balance, which would be the five lots to be created. So, to, to do that, you know, we'd, we'd have to install, obviously, the, the town road, and all supporting infrastructure, but if you can see here, I, we have, so phase one would be lots one, two, and three, and then 11, 10, and nine. So the phasing line kind of goes kind of diagonal near the bulb of the cul-de-sac, so that would be phase two to the north, or northeast, and then toward Route 82 would be the phase one portion. So basically here tonight to obviously go over this concept with the board, based upon our findings, specific to service connections to this district, to this piece, and then obviously having authorization to re-notify the neighbors and re-notice, re-advertise.
Got it. So, so could you, could you please repeat the, the phases again, and, and maybe describe for me which, which lots are phase one?
Let me try to zoom in here a little bit, so you can see it a little better.
Great, yeah, if you can point at it with your cursor, that would even be helpful.
Yeah. A little too much. All right, so here we have, can you see the cursor?
Uh huh.
So that would be lot one, lot two, lot three, and then we have this phasing line here, this heavy line, so this would be the boundary between phase one and two, it would go around the cul-de-sac, come back down. Phase one would also be nine, 10, and 11.
Got it.
So, basically, this whole portion here, this, this rear, let's see, near the cul-de-sac, all of these lots would be combined into, let's say, lot three. So if you go up here to the first page, looking at it from a plat standpoint, so this over here, these would be the, the six lots that would be created, so again, one, two, three would come all the way over to here, that'd be one lot, and then nine, 10, and 11. And we show in concept the phase two. It's similar how they did like Beepin Country Club, where it's, you look at it overall, and then you kind of dial it back and do sections.
But you are looking to subdivide all of those lots in that existing lot three?
Yeah, eventually, one water does, one capacity does come online, so if you look over here, this would be like the phase two, where these lot lines are created under a phase two concept.
So how many lot, how many, sorry, how many acres will lot three end up with?
So lot three would end up with just a hair over, let's say, seven, seven and a half would be lot three.
I believe that our last meeting, it was discussed that it was only one tap for that entire parcel prior to the subdivision.
Yeah. The way we read the code, and we reviewed it with the town council, that we were able to do six, six service taps, and I think in my response letter, I think I referenced the section of the district creation and the actual wording in that section.
And so you have agreement from the proper authorities that indeed you do have that number of taps available to?
With the applicant, with the applicant working with the town, yes, that's what I understand, and the town is obviously here tonight, and that's, again, that's why we're here tonight, to make sure that we're all on the same page, in an agreement that we could, if we are, then move toward the scheduling, you know, of another public hearing.
Got it. Okay.
Do you also, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you also have a, a phasing ready for the clearance of the lots there? In the last discussion we had, there was a lot of concern around clear cutting, or is this already cleared?
It's not already cleared, so any clearing that happened was associated with the three separate parcels to the north, they were not associated with this application.
Okay.
They're individual existing lots, so there's been no clearing on this lot. The only thing that we've done on this parcel is we've been on-site with the board of health doing a feasibility soil testing. doing a feasibility soil testing to ensure that the septic systems can work where they're proposed.
So is this tree, especially lot three, that's gonna now be the seven acres, or is it, is it a field? I'm just not?
It's, it's, the parcel, if you look at, if you look at basically along Route 82, and you offset in maybe 100, 125 feet, that's cleared. They used to have corn planted there, and then you transition into a wooded area.
Okay.
So, you know, the intention, I think, for the construction of phase one would be, you know, obviously clear the road, clear the lots that are under the phase one application, and then at such time that phase two comes around, there would be clearing that would move into those lots.
And then what would happen with lot three with regards to the maintenance of it thereafter if this phasing plan took place?
Well, I'm assuming that lot three would probably remain under ownership of the developer because the intent is to subdivide that, so he would maintain control of that lot, or he would have some kind of restriction on it that he could come back in. I would assume that he would retain that lot until such time that he can come back in. And obviously, if we, you know, if we're going through this process and we're showing phasing and we're showing clearing, clearing limits, you know, if, if somebody goes in there and starts clearing trees down, obviously we'd be back in front of the board because that wasn't the intent that we described to you. So there is a, there is a, like a check balances when it comes to clearing on that, that larger parcel on phase three.
I thought this was partially cleared already.
Not this parcel.
I know the three north of that, but I believe this was cleared, and they actually put a stop work order on that parcel at some point.
Because that's not my understanding. Guys, is that?
No, that was the other three lots.
It's the other three lots, not this.
I think it's the ones that are closer to.
Sign might have been close to that line, maybe?
Yes.
And, and what, the houses that would be built on these lots would be similar to the ones that are just north? What, what size are those?
I think we were in the 2,400, 2,800 range, possibly, you know, similar size of what's, what's driving the market right now. And we do show house sizes that dimensionally reflect that on, on our proposed plan.
Got it.
One of the comments from last time was that, especially, I think, the lot that sits on 80, is it, well, lot 11 that faces 82, can it be squared up? It's got like a one.
I did, I did square it up.
Oh, all right. I'm not seeing that on this.
Yeah, that, well, I squared it up a little bit. The, the lot line used to. I'll square it up a little bit more once we go through the Board of Health, because that is where the septic area is.
Okay. It's just, I mean, you know.
You don't like that little jog there, do you?
Brian, I don't remember where we are in, with regards to seeker. I can't remember if we circulated last time, because I knew it was a little bit odd we were going to kind of do the approval without the, so I think, I don't know that we've ever declared lead agency on this one.
It's, I don't remember what I did yesterday, so that, I, I don't remember seeing anything. No, I thought we did circulate, didn't we?
I may have circulated, but I don't know if we ever declared lead.
Yeah, I don't think we declared, but now we circulated.
So, we can, we can do that this evening? Let's go ahead and do that. Could I have a motion to declare intent to be lead agency?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, other questions or comments before we try to schedule a public hearing?
No, we have some work we have to do on our end. We have some environmental cleanup. We have stormwater and SWIP that we'll be providing for drainage, and we have submitted an application to DOT for the individual driveway and subdivision entrance, so those are in process, and hopefully they'll get some responses as we.
You will be getting comments from consultant, outside consultants on this conference.
So do you expect to be able to submit plans in time to be able to, to come back to us in the next meeting, or should we be trying to go out a couple of?
No, I think we're, we're submission dates at the end of the month, correct? Right, so we'll be, we'll be set up for that.
Set up for, for December? Okay. There's no other, are there?
Brian, can you just forward whatever was sent to the, to the DOT to? Yes, sir. Thank you.
So could I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for States of Phillips Farm for our December 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Is there any other business to come before the planning board this evening? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.